Maritza Martija.
Hello, Maria Luisa Martija. Thank you. I started working when I was 15 and I worked for about 12 years with one employer and six, seven with another one, and I never asked for a raise. I never asked for a raise because I didn't have to ask for one. My employers, and I didn't know that way back then, would always give us an automatic raise every year, and I had a wonderful medical insurance. It was called Blue Cross back then. I didn't know you had to ask for a raise, not until, and it hurts me to say this because I love my job, not until I became a teacher and I started working for the district, and it hurts me because I do love my job. I didn't know you had to fight for a raise. I didn't know you had to stand up with a stick and a poster, bargain value. I didn't know negotiators have to spend hours and hours of their time that they should be home with their families making negotiations. I didn't know we had to beg for a raise, and that is very embarrassing. And don't get me wrong, it's not embarrassing from our side, from teachers. There is nothing embarrassing about being a teacher, nothing. We should all be very proud of what we do, very, very proud. When I say it's embarrassing, I mean from the other side of the table. It is embarrassing. And if you remember that, we are the actions, the way we treat other people is only a reflection of what we are, what we have inside. We cannot give anything that we don't have. We treat people, we are fair and just in the measure that we are fair and just with ourselves. I want to think that maybe they don't understand what the word "raise" means, and I'm just saying "raise," but there are other issues. But I think they don't understand that when you give somebody a raise, you're really giving it to yourself, you're really giving it to your kids, because you're setting an example. You're teaching your own kids and your family. This is how you treat people. This is a definition of being fair and just. A raise is about respect, it's about dignity, it's about integrity, it's about acknowledging a person, it's about recognizing a person, it's an investment onto the people that work for you, because don't you want the best for your own kids? Don't we hear that we are supposed to be a family? Now, think about it. Think about the message and the example that you're setting. You want the best for your employees, they don't have to be spending time in negotiations and all of these. Then let's say that I go back home and on Saturday, somebody is going to come and help me in my garden. When the gardener comes over, I'm not going to be negotiating with him. I'll pay him what is fair, and I am setting an example for my kids because they are observing me, how do I treat other people? And then this person that helped me takes his own kids to a restaurant that night, and he doesn't bargain with the receipt when he has to pay, and probably for sure, when the waitress comes over, he'll give the waitress a very fair tip that maybe she needs.
Ms. Martija.
My time is over?
Yes.
Please set an example. Please remember that what you do is a reflection of which you have inside. Make a choice. Be an example to your own kids, to the teachers. It takes nothing away from anybody, from someone to make the right choice. Be different. We've been through a lot this year. Move your values, move your things around, please. We don't want to go through this again because they say if you don't learn your lesson, the universe, the world, or whoever is going to give it back and back to you. Thank you very much. Be different.
Thank you, Ms. Martija. Next speaker on negotiations, Montano Carlos.
Good evening, board members and members of the public community. I'm here just to, as a lead negotiator, give you an update, the board and the public, on what's been going on with negotiations. We've met twice so far. Even though we've scheduled to meet four times, district negotiations team has canceled twice on us. June 3rd was one that was canceled, and then June 25th, which is this Friday, has already been canceled. We've tried to meet all the dates that they provided for us, so that way, you know, we're available, we want to negotiate, we're here to negotiate, and that's what we want to do. But again, two cancellations already, and we're scheduled for July 1st again, and hopefully that doesn't get canceled. So, a quick rundown of what's happened so far. As you already know, we have not had a raise for four years. We haven't had a contract for two years. Yet, when we met on June 14th, we did not get a proposal from the district negotiations team. They didn't have one ready for us. We expected them to have one ready, but they didn't. Instead, they talked about benefits. You know, the last four years have gone by without a raise, without a, two years without a contract, but they want to talk about benefits, which is already done, that's already passed. We've also, on that same day, we had a presentation on the budget, which pertains to, you know, whether we get a raise or not. We listened to the presentation. We had questions for them. We gave them questions, and then that's about it. We met, we set the agenda for the next meeting. At the next meeting, which was yesterday, they brought in a person from Anthem Blue, I'm sorry, from Keenan and Associates to give us a presentation on benefits. We listened to that also. Again, no proposal. We did ask for a proposal, but there was no proposal, again. So, after we listened to the presentation on the benefits, we did have some questions for the lady that gave us the presentation. We went on and talked about a little bit more on the budget. The district negotiations team did have some answers for some of the questions that we had at the previous meeting. They didn't answer all the questions, but they answered most of them, give them that. And once again, I asked them, you know, why aren't we meeting on the 25th? They gave us their answer, somebody couldn't make it or whatever, and then we scheduled for July 1st. I did ask them, will you have a proposal for us for the last four years? Their answer was, we will have a proposal. Who knows what that proposal consists of? But again, we are trying to deal with the last four years of no raise and no contract for two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montano. Next, public comments on negotiations, Veronica Torres.
Good afternoon, board, fellow teachers, public. Nice to be here in front of the podium, it's been a long time. But today, you know, I don't have anything prepared, but I am going to speak, whatever the time that you do give me, because I do know how to talk. I've been here, you know, previously as a vice president representing our union, but here I am as a teacher. And as Carlos Montano said perfectly, you know, you have canceled, you know, meeting after meeting, you have not had anything prepared, you know, to bring to the table, you know, to offer us. We work endlessly. This has been the most challenging year ever in our lives, and I know, I speak for myself, I know I'm also speaking for my fellow colleagues, and we're talking about teachers, counselors, school psychologists, everyone. And honestly, to me, after this year, I would think that the least that you, as the board, could do for us is give us something in return. Show us that respect that we deserve, we earned it. This year, we emptied ourselves completely. We found within ourselves more than we thought we had, and we drew from that. We drew from each other's strength, knowing that we loved our kids, regardless if they responded, regardless if we had support at home, we were there, sunrise to even after sunset, we were there, and I can tell you that from my personal experience. And those who know me, know me, you know my work ethic, and I believe strongly that I represent the majority of teachers, school psychologists, or counselors, if not all. But I am here to ask of you to give us that respect that we earned. We have given countless of hours, family time, we have gone through physical pain, sadness, deep sadness when kids don't respond, when kids don't engage. We go through those deep sadness. We talk about students' socio-emotional needs. We suffered so much emotionally through this year. We have suffered because why? We love these kids. We are in this profession because of our love for them. I can tell you, it's been over 27 years I started teaching, and I have that same passion and that same fire inside of me right now that I have, even greater now, because now I understand what it's about. And I would probably say I wish I could have chosen another profession that I could have been valued, because I'm a professional. We are professionals, we should be respected and valued, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Next to speak on negotiations, Patricia Aguilera.
Good evening, everyone. To begin with, well, first, I've been a teacher for dual school since 1997, 24 years already. One of my colleagues was asking me, I say, 23. He said, no, 24. I was so happy, but then I said, well, I'm lucky that next year, I'm going to go to the next step, the 25-year salary, because I've been stuck for that since the 20th. So, to begin with, the cost of living, it's unbalanced. In 1999, a house could cost $105,000. Today, it can cost $490,000. In 1999, teacher's salary was $65,000. Today, it's starting at $69,000. Next, we dedicate more time to our work than the stipulated contract hours. Third, being a teacher nowadays is to live under the standards of needs and not on the wants. I am lucky to live on my wants and not on my needs, because I receive money from other sources, child support and spousal support. Otherwise, I wouldn't be. I would be on the needs and under the low income ratio. Then, I will have student loans to help my children to pay back if it weren't for their father's financial support. Finally, being a teacher requires passion and love for our students. It is sad that all the extra time and passion for what we do is not appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Next on the list is Maria Flores on CSU negotiations.
Good afternoon, board members and administrators. My name is Maria Teresa Flores, and I've been teaching at Blanche Charles Elementary School for the past 25 years. I have a total of 34 years serving kids in Callexico and in Brawley, and in Callexico again. I just received my 25th Year Service Award, where it states, "In recognition of 25 years of outstanding service and dedication." I felt very proud of myself when I was named on the virtual ceremony. My kids, my daughter from New Mexico and my son in San Diego, were clapping for their mom, a poor woman who came to Callexico when she was 17 years old with no English at all, the youngest of 13 kids, and the only one that came to the United States and receiving education. Every year, when the school year begins, we used to get these get-togethers, and we were welcomed by administrators, and we were told beautiful words about how proud they felt about their teachers, how great or wonderful teachers we had in Callexico. And you know what? I would like to share with you some words that a wise woman once said, and that was my mom, who only had the opportunity to go to first grade. "Mijita, las palabras se las lleva el viento." Board members, love your teachers the way you want your teachers to love their students, with grace, with respect, appreciation, and validation. If the statement on the 25 Years of Service Award is true, then give us the value, the support, and the salary raise we deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Next on item B, Melissa Gamboa.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Gamboa. I'm a teacher. I've been teaching for 15 years in this school district. I'm super tired because I'm also teaching summer school, when I am exhausted from last year. And then after learning that Brawley was making 75% more per hour than I am this summer, it really upset me, because they're not on the newspaper trying to fight for that. I haven't seen other districts fighting for a raise, and yet they're still making more money than we are. But right now, I am even more furious when I was skimming through that 90-page-plus document, and I find myself with questions and a lot of anger. For one, a lot of it was just looking out for administration. There wasn't no looking out for me, there wasn't looking out for our students, it was looking out for administration. You look out for yourselves while we're here looking out for ourselves, our students, our career, our passion, and our livelihood. Then I think, why now? Why do that when it goes back to 2015? Why not when Mr. Gonzalez was working to be in a superintendent, when he was still in HR? Why not when you had a district administrator sexually harassing us? Why not speak up then of the injustices that are happening at this district? Because we're teachers, right? We're just teachers. I also want you to amend your list of Willie Moreno's staff not following protocol when we wrote that letter of no confidence for Mr. Alejandro Avina. We emailed you, we emailed Mr. Gonzalez, we emailed Dr. Thurman, we emailed the entire board. We never heard back from Mr. Gonzalez, never were we acknowledged, never were like, we're going to take care of this, nothing. This district needs some deep cleaning. We need a superintendent, board members, and administrators that are qualified and put our students first. We're here in the heat, trying to picket and do all these things just to ask for some respect. It's ridiculous. I still have to plan for tomorrow's class. We still, a lot of us are teaching summer school. We have families, we have like a life that we want to get to, but yet we have to plan and do all these things because you can't negotiate in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamboa. Next is on negotiations, item B, Mayra Hernandez. It's up to you, whatever you want to give us. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Okay. Hi, dear CUSD governing board, this has certainly been a challenging year for everyone. It has been a time full of uncertainty, frustration, fear, and personal losses for many of us. However, hope and faith of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel has prevailed and has been our motivation not to falter and stay strong. We are proud Callexico teachers who strive to give our best in every lesson we present to our kids. We embrace our community and its educational needs. We plan and provide the best possible quality instruction we can with the resources we have. We are fully aware of what the current COVID-19 pandemic scenario implicates. We love our district and our Callexico families. However, in recent years, we have felt that the support and recognition we promote and pledge to our Callexico district has not been reciprocal. Money is not our number one priority, or else we would not be in the teaching profession. However, the cost of living has increased, including extra expenses in many of our families due to this health crisis. In addition to this, the fact that other neighboring districts in Imperial Valley have been given constant pay raises as well creates the moral and economic need to request inadequate pay increment for our certified staff. We are on the battlefield on a daily basis. We face the challenges of teaching, reading, writing, and math to Callexico's children with love and determination by telling them that we will overcome this COVID crisis together and that life will go back to normal in the near future. Please consider this petition with the respect and seriousness it deserves. By not underestimating our professional contribution to the community, do not miss out on the opportunity of restoring some dignity and recognition to our profession, which is what we love the most. Thank you for your attention and, sorry, acknowledgement of this legitimate concern. Respectfully, schools listed Dual Elementary, Rockwood Elementary, Kennedy Gardens, Jefferson Elementary, Willie Moreno, Enrique Camarena, Mains, Callexico High, Main Campus, Cesar Chavez, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Next on the list, Jose Guillén on item B.
I'm Jose Guillén. I used to be a classified employee, and I hear the teachers and, you know, it gets me. And one of the things is, I like to be honest, and I really, I wish I could say my words that are really hard for the school board, for the administrators, they don't really care. I see people in the board, and to be honest with you, I only see one that is truthful. I don't want to say his name because I don't want, well, I wish I could say it and make you guys feel bad, because that's what you do with people in here. I've seen you guys, when you're running for the position of school board, you make so many promises, then you get the position, then you turn around 160 degrees. I feel bad because I've been living here in Callexico for 60 years. I went to school over here. I've been through good things. I like, I love Callexico, but I hate City Hall. I hate you guys because what you do, what you make these people go through, that you really don't care. You guys don't have any conscience. But right now, the administrators got bullied, now everything is backwards. Now, you've got to put a lot of stuff in it for administrators. For me, it's good, because the way you guys are, you can't even handle yourself. You're fighting among yourself, and you're supposed to be all professionals. See, we, I'm, I used to work in the fields, I'm not a professional. And I used to joke around a lot of stuff and hang around with a lot of people. But I came to work in the district, and I said to myself, well, everybody here has an education, but I was wrong. It's worse than here, than working on a field. At least the people in the field, they're honest. You guys are not. You're not honest. And I want to say to the people, especially for you Calderones, you're harassing people. You're nothing. These people over here put you in there, and they can get you out of it. You're in a position that you don't own that position. Anybody that is here, the teachers own their positions because they've got a union. You guys own. And I wish you had a little bit of conscience to see what's happening with these teachers over here, with classified, with everybody. You've been, you know, you're not the only, this is not the first time that you guys been harassing people, that you've been harassing teachers, you've been harassing even principals. You're not above the law, you're just another person. You put that in yourself and say, you know, I'm just a regular person like everybody in here. And understand the people, and I know because I work here. And you guys never, never put attention to the negotiations because you think you're too good for the teachers or for the classified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guillén. Next on the, to speak, Sandra Mendoza on D3.
I'm here to urge the board to please attend negotiations. You are the individuals who have the final say, but you are not there to be part of the conversation. I personally feel that the budget that was presented to you is a misrepresentation. The budget that was presented to you understates revenues and overstates expenditures. Why does it understate revenues? Because it's reducing the revenues based on predictions, and that's okay. You can predict that revenues are going to go down, but when you predict revenues are going to go down, costs also go down. The budget that was presented right here in this boardroom understates the revenues but overstates the expenditures. It says that our enrollment is going to go down. Fine, if our enrollment's going to go down, it's going to go down. I don't feel your accounting department is misrepresenting the numbers. They cannot reduce the expenditures until adjustments have been made by the board, and I understand that. I just don't feel that three-year budget that you were presented should be I just don't feel that three-year budget that you were presented should be the budget that you're using to make decisions about our future salaries. Because again, the revenues are being understated, the expenditures are being overstated, so therefore, our cash reserves are taking a huge hit. Right now, we have a very healthy reserve. The next three years, huge, it's almost gone. Why? Because this three-year budget has been misrepresented. You don't know that because you haven't been in the room for the conversations. Why isn't the superintendent and the board, the people who are the most crucial to our negotiations, not in the room? It makes no sense. Absolutely zero sense. You are the number-one people who have to be there. If you want all those other people in there with you, fine, but you have no idea what's really going on. And you say, "Oh, she's just a schoolteacher." Well, I'm a schoolteacher who has a four-year accounting degree, so I know what I'm looking So therefore, another thing I also see, we have a very healthy reserve, but we haven't been paying these people what they deserve. I've been looking at the cash flows. Yes, I'm looking at the highest payroll, but the cash flow for Brawley, for someone who's worked there thirty-one years, is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty-six thousand. For Clecsico, for thirty years, is a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Subtract the two differences from each other, that's a cash flow of thirty-one thousand-dollar difference. Why can't this district pay us more? Because we are buying the best of everything. We're buying privacy fences. We're spending seventy-four thousand dollars on a technology room. That's just one board meeting I went to, and I didn't even read and look at everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza. Next, on item D3, Alma Flores.
Good evening to all. My name is Alma Flores, and I have worked for Clecsico Unified School District for twenty-one years. I am here because for the past four years, I have worked without a contract. Inflation, on the other hand, has gone up every one of those years, but my salary has not. And my family and home has been affected by this. I love my job, and I go to work happy every day, and for that, I am very grateful. Every teacher in Clecsico sees teaching as their calling, not just a job. We give our jobs a hundred percent of our effort because we know we are doing this for our students. We deserve a fair contract. We deserve to be treated with respect. We urge you to negotiate in good faith. Visit classrooms, ask questions, look at lesson plans, see the dedication that we have to our jobs. Once you do this, tell us what you truly think we deserve, so we can start really negotiating, knowing you have given our situation thought and time and are doing so in good faith. Deal with us respectfully. Deal with us professionally. Deal with us fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Next on the list is Alvarado Belinda, item D3 or D1.
Good evening, school board trustees, the community, and the beloved teachers of our community. My name is Belinda Alvarado, lifetime resident of Clecsico and graduate of Clecsico High School, along with my entire family. We are a proud Bulldog family, and like we say in Clecsico, once a Bulldog, always a Bulldog. So we are Bulldogs. Thank you. I would like to use my allocated three minutes to address the classified employee situation, which needs to be addressed openly. I will not mention any names, just my own personal comments and why I'm complaining. Number one, as you know, the school district adopted the Personnel Commission since 1989, and the district has operated under the merit system, and the original purpose was to show no favoritism or prejudice in hiring classified employees. Clecsico, number two, Clecsico is the only district in Imperial County that has a Personnel Commission, so that should tell you something. The state of California has over a thousand school districts, and only about eighty districts utilize the Personnel Commission. This is less than ten percent of all school districts. In my opinion, and many other community members as me, they share the same opinion as I do. Our Personnel Commission and merit system is deeply flawed and has many serious issues. It is very discriminatory towards sex and age. Women are not being given the same opportunities. As a woman over fifty years of age, I feel that the district is not inclusive. Many positions are left open due to our compa reputation. Our district has a well-known reputation for having a compa system where even direct relatives to school board members were included in this commission. This is not a merit system, but instead turned into a system of hiring who you know and not hiring the most qualified persons for the job. Case in point, look at the facilities and maintenance division. Women are a strong minority. The district's hiring process has been politically clumsy, and change is desperately needed. Otherwise, you will be receiving Equal Opportunity Commission investigations on your classified hiring processes and practices based on age and gender. Remember, the children of the school district come first. Let's hire the best qualified and also provide the women of the community that they have future opportunities with Clecsico schools. We are not in the nineteen-twenty's gentlemen and women. Our merit system is indeed broken. Let's join our other Imperial County School District and have a regular human resources department for classified hiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado. Talking on behalf of CSCA Negotiations, Pat Bristol.
Good evening, board members, and community and teachers, and CSCA members. I'm here representing the negotiating team of CSCA. A lot of you know me, I'm back, okay? So I've been here in the district working for forty years. I just got my recognition as well as a teacher's, and I was put up there, the first one there, but I'm proud to be a Bulldog, to be a Clecsico School District employee. But I'm not happy how it works, especially with some of the board members. And hiring attorneys, that is my big issue. In negotiations, we have been, three negotiations, I think we've met this year, and we closed our contract for 2019. Then, we got called back first, and the teachers, the teachers need their contract, and we support them, because without the CSCA, the teachers, the CSCA is the backbone, we are together. Okay? Also, you're paying thousands of dollars. This attorney, Mr. Pearl and his cabinet, they come into negotiations, we give him a counter, we give him a proposal, they come back with nothing. So I don't know if the board realizes that that is going on. Twice, we asked him for a counter. He comes back with a paper, and he also scratches all over our counter and just adds, "Go to Article." What is that? The contract. I've been in negotiations for years. I'm a negotiator, I'm a chief, also a health technician at the Clecsico High School, I'm also a job steward, and I'm also an advisor to the president. So I am asking for you to not have that firm. That firm works for the board. It doesn't work for the, for the teachers or the CSCA. And also, that money that you're paying, I saw the report, you have to pay him for copying paper, mailing this, mailing that. Where's, you say there's no money. Use it in the people that are in the front of the schools, the classified, the food service, the MNO, the secretaries. Everybody's been working since the COVID-19. We've been there. So I asked the board to review their agreement and to give us a fair contract, and they want to go to our health benefits? That's an economical package that goes with our raise. You don't divide that. We don't even have a COVID to return back for the classified safety. We haven't negotiated anything. So you're paying him three sessions for nothing. So I am asking you to really look into this, because we're not gonna step down, we're stepping up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Item B, Negotiations, Rodriguez Evarosa.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. Good evening, fellow teachers, supporting parents, and everyone. My name is Evarosa Rodriguez. I was born and raised in Clecsico. I live in Clecsico. My son goes to a Clecsico school. So it's safe to say that I also am a Bulldog family. Growing up, my parents, with my parents, I come from very humble beginnings. I, I always heard every single day of school, "Estudia mucho, mija. Pon atención. Study hard, pay attention. We want you to further your education, learn about new ideas, open your horizons, and when you grow up, you won't have to worry about paying the bills like we do." I never imagined that after getting a bachelor's, a master's, a credential, a reading specialist state certificate, among other higher education credits, simply because I wanted to expand my learning about teaching or about the content that I'm teaching. I never imagined that after having the equivalent of ten years of higher education and twenty-three years of teaching for Clecsico Unified, that I would have to decide, "Okay, can I afford to get a new car?" Because I drive a ten-year-old beat-up car that the AC stopped working, by the way. Can I afford to get a new car that I obviously need or pay my electricity bill? As we all know, that's very expensive here in Clecsico. I never thought that I'd tell my parents after getting ten years of higher education why I have to choose which bill I can pay, because everything goes up, but our salaries stay still. And in the news, they're calling it a raise. Let's call it what it is. It's an adjustment. We have never gotten a raise. So after one of the most difficult and challenging school years of my career and that of my colleagues, what the district is doing in quote-unquote "negotiations," and I quote it because I feel like we shouldn't even call it that, to me, it's like a kick when we're down. But you know what? Something about Clecsico teachers is that we get right back up, and here we are. We deserve respect. We deserve to be valued. We are quality, highly educated teachers. You should treat us as such. I know my time is about to expire, so I'm just gonna say one more thing. There are teachers leaving our district. They come to our district, and maybe they're green, fresh out of college, they get the experience, they get the training. You invest time and money into them, and then what do they do? They leave. They leave a few miles north. But who can blame them? Who can blame them, really? Because they leave and they get paid ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more for the absolute same job that we do here. So for those young people that do that, that have little kids and just got their new home and have an expensive mortgage, who can blame them? I'm a Clecsican. I love my community. I want to retire from Clecsico. But a lot of people have no ties to Clecsico, and they leave. You pay for their training. You pay for them to go from a green teacher to an experienced teacher, and then they leave us because to them, it's not worth staying. And that's very sad, because I truly believe Clecsico students deserve the best teachers. And somebody here mentioned that we will not give up, we will stay standing, and I can say that for every single person that is here. You see us standing, get used to it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. That's the end of our public comments. Item C, Announcements of Communion to Close Session, Amy.
With regard to item D4, one matter is posted with the agenda. One matter relates to allegations of age and gender discrimination in the classified hiring process, and one matter relates to allegations of injury to staff based on alleged carcinogens on campuses.
Thank you. We're gonna go into close session, it's now six or five. We'll announce when we come back into open session. Thank you.